That's where she has been. Our. Our memoriam.
Yes, sir.
Princess Rose. Yeah. Like slight. I have my contacts in, so. Get like. They can't see him unless he's real close.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Citizens may appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission to address items not listed on the agenda in accordance with procedural rules as determined by the meeting chair and by submitting a public comment form to the chair no later than the conclusion of the agenda item called to order. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Going once, going twice, okay. All right, we're gonna move on to action number one. Discuss, consider, and act upon the preliminary and final plat for Texoma Empire.
PNC Board. The plat that is part of you, first of all, I think I have it out of order in your packet. I think ordinance eight thirty-six is first in your packet. This is behind that. So the plat submitted by Texoma Empire has been submitted properly with the fees paid. Our city engineer has approved the plat. City staff recommends approval. If there's any questions, Tim can probably speak on behalf of this plat.
Thank you, Monty. Any discussion? No, no questions?
Make a motion to accept the recommendation for approval of this plat.
Okay, Sharon's making a motion to approve.
A second.
With Larry seconding, all in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. So this will be action number two. Ordinance number eight thirty-six. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Howe, Texas, amending Howe zoning ordinance as amended to rezone a tract of land consisting of ten point eight five four acres of land located in the Jay Handing survey abstract number five fifteen, Grayson County, Texas, in the city of Howe, Grayson County, Texas, previously zoned ag, providing that the tract is hereby rezoned as C2, which is commercial two, describing the tract to be rezoned, providing a penalty clause, savings and repealing clause, severability clause, and an effective date, and providing for the publication of the caption hereof.
No motion for that?
So I think because it's an ordinance, we've got to open it up for public hearing first. Is that accurate, or do you want to make a statement first? Sure.
As you recall, this recently was annexed. It's the property on Old Highway, oh, not Old, on Highway Five and Old Patterson Road near our GTUA location. Mr. Mondragon has his house in the middle and two properties on each side, which was annexed, and now we just need to zone those. He is, he'll open Dragon's Garden Center on that property, which fits with the C2 zoning by ordinance number seven fifty-six, and the staff recommends approval for this zoning request.
Thank you, Monty. All right, so I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing on this ordinance, eight thirty-six.
Just real quick, I'm sorry. We did send letters out to nearby property owners within two hundred feet, and we didn't get any back.
Are there many within two hundred feet? Okay. All right, so we've got to open for a public hearing if there's anyone that would like to comment on this ordinance. No one? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and now we can discuss, consider, and act upon this ordinance number eight thirty-six.
I can motion for that?
Okay. Nicole's gonna make the motion to approve the rezoning?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Brandon seconds, all in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right, that is going to conclude the meeting. We're gonna adjourn at six oh four PM.
Did you do that? Did you do that?
Good evening. There being a quorum present, this regular session of the Howe City Council is hereby called to order on Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six oh seven PM under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Texas. Sorry, I lost my script there. There is a quorum present. Members present are Mr. Ingram, Mr. Price, Mr. Tyler, Mr. Woods, Mr. Whitfield, and myself, Ms. McDonald. If you will, please remove your hats and silence your cellphones as we stand for the invocation and the pledges.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come together as a city and as, as just a group. Probably just ask that you guide over us. We ask that you guide over our city, or that we do the things that are best for it. Our personal thing aside, and do what we know is good. Hope we just had to guide our hearts and our minds across them in front.
And now for pledges. In the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, undegrollable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, undegrollable, one and indivisible.
Thank you, and please proceed. The City Council invites citizens to speak to the council on topics not already scheduled on the agenda for public hearing or on any topic on which the City Council has authority. Citizens may address the council for a maximum of two minutes. The council is unable to respond to or discuss any issues that are brought up during this section that are not on the agenda, other than to make a statement of specific factual information in response to a citizen's inquiry or to recite existing policy in response to the inquiry. Except for public, except for public hearing items, please submit the public comment form to the mayor. I did not receive any public comment forms. Do, are there any out there? Okay, moving forward. Mayor comments. Howe Hump Day Networking Breakfast is gonna be held on Wednesday, September third, twenty twenty-five, from eight AM to nine PM, nine AM, excuse me. And this will be held at South State Bank for this particular breakfast. The Mayor Brag Moment. Anyone can be nominated for the Mayor Brag Moment. They may be a citizen or a city employee. Individuals are recognized for behaviors that are, that positively affect other citizens and the community. If you would like to nominate someone, please contact me in person or email the mayor. Anyone can nominate anyone. My email address is on the city website. Moving on to consent items. These consent, these items consist of non-controversial or housekeeping items required by law. Items may be considered individual by any council member making such a request prior to a motion and vote on the consent items. One, discuss, consider, and act upon the consent items which are marked by an asterisk. They include minutes of the regular city council meeting, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, bills being paid for the month, detailed check register report, statement of revenue and expenditures, South State Bank secured deposits, July twenty twenty-five, recap and standings, July twenty twenty-five. Does the council wish to discuss any of these items? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Sean is gonna make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky, I heard Ricky, sorry. Is making a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Discussion items, departmental reports. First is the Howe Police Department. Chief Sullivan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. July was another busy month for us. Over July, we had a seventy-five percent increase in call volume compared to previous year. We were continually see that to be a steady growth overall, about a forty-seven percent growth year over year. Staffing, we, September the eighth, we have a new administrative assistant for the starting, so I cannot tell you how excited I am to have that additional help in the office and alleviate some of the paper trail that this job demands. July twenty-eighth, we hired Officer Justin Light, who's a city guy here. Purposely did not hide him from y'all. Justin was brought here solely for narcotics and addiction. He is working on going to the task force and will help solve some of our narcotic issues within our community, bringing several years of experience doing that specifically, and worked for me many years ago in Somerville. Training, we completed forty hours of the month. All department personnel completed their mandatory TECO training hours due August thirty-first. Statistics, as I said, we answered two hundred and fourteen calls for service versus one hundred and twenty-two the previous year, the seventy-five percent increase, the forty-seven percent increase overall. We continue to see those calls go up. We're starting to see a different variety of calls, basically because of our growth and the more citizens we have that join our community. Officers are obviously out and doing traffic stops, trying to get people to drive better, especially with all this construction. We have seen an uptick in our traffic issues and accidents. So for the month of July, we issued ninety-five citations, a hundred and forty-eight warnings. I will tell you, as I look today, we're already at ninety-two for the month, so we have been extremely busy trying to get people to slow down and drive a little better. We're working still with some of our business partners to get us a crowd convention meeting. We hope to hold that on a Saturday with the citizens will also be welcome to come. We're strongly trying to get our citizens to start locking their car doors. We're starting to see issues with cars being stolen and are burglarized. We brought on new equipment from the Leos program, and that's all we have. Any questions?
Council, questions, comments? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Howe Fire Department, Chief Manay.
Mayor, Council, good evening. In the month of July, Howe Fire Rescue ran a total of seventy-four calls for service, including multiple fire calls, MBAs, grass fires, and EMS calls being our highest percentage again. The Fire Department's been very busy. We're preparing and completing training classes that we've been doing. We have two of our members completing their skills portion for an instructor course tomorrow to be certified as an instructor. We had three members return from our annual TECS training class for agriculture rescue. They bring tons of knowledge and experience and ideas back to help us further our trainings and our endeavors in the future with our farming in this area, to help us if there's any incidents or anything like that. We had our first two complete Fire Academy, and it says on here they're awaiting their state final, but they actually have completed and are certified as of this day, this past week. So they are now completely done. We have three more that will be completed the end of September. They go for two weeks to do their skills, the middle of September, for their fire skills, for Fire Academy skills, excuse me. Our large vehicle extrication and vehicle fire training that we put out on the web and on Facebook went over without a hiccup. It was great training, lasted approximately four hours. We able to cut up a car, burn a car, teach our, teach our guys and girls the proper ways to do things and be safe about it with that. We have completed our two-year renewal for our dishes, which is our EMS license. It is completed, and we have been issued our new renewal, and we are back being certified. We never were without it. We just upgraded it and updated it. So things are good to go with that. We've completed some necessary repairs to the ambulances and fire trucks to keep everything going smooth and in service, just routine maintenance items like that on these things. Our certification classes are still underway. We've still got some coming in the future, and we will have some more going into next year also that we are preparing for with this. Please be aware of the heat and stay hydrated, as the heat can really get to everybody. And we'd like to see you on better terms and having you guys call nine-one-one or anybody in this community call nine-one-one. Any questions? No, not yet, I will. Any questions on the report?
Council, questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
I do have one more thing I'd like to add. We received a, the gentleman would like to remain anonymous with this, a donation approximately thirty to forty thousand dollars in items used for life safety and firefight. I have the Lucas device with us. It's an automated CPR machine that we now have for our EMS, and then we were also donated hand tools, tools for the fire trucks, nozzles, gear, things like that, that we can use for our future and our trainings. So that was a wonderful anonymous donation that happened this past weekend, and I'd like to say thank you to that anonymous person, and we'll move forward and grow with everything we can get.
Yes, thank you for, to the anonymous donor. It's very nice. City Secretary, Ms. Hewitt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In regards to our systems, I'm still in the process of setting up our permit department in Fundview. It's taking us a little bit longer than we had expected. Our new court clerk and I have been working tirelessly to process old cases, and we estimate having all cases accounted for and processed by October thirty-first at the latest. All new citations are now being imported directly from the police department software, so there's no data entry that we need to do on our end. Any new citation documents will be scanned into Fundview, and we anticipate our court being paperless in the court department by the end of the year. I have begun scanning and uploading accounts payable documents into Fundview, so we can be paperless in that department as well by the end of the year. Since we had such a huge backlog for the core amp permits, I've had to delay the implementation of our retention policy. I haven't forgotten about it, but I do anticipate that we'll have this solidified and ready by the end of the year at latest. We've begun a new audit for the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, so all documentations on my end have been submitted for review, and now it's up to our consultants to get the rest of the documents submitted. We have some exciting updates for our court. Last month, we issued a hundred and thirty-one warrants, which is the most that we've issued. In one month, we collected thirty-one thousand in court fines, which is the most ever collected in one month. Of that amount, fifteen thousand eight twenty-seven point two eight is, came straight to the city. All previous backlog of cases has been processed, and we're averaging between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars in collection of fines and fees per day. Unfortunately, Jessica's not gonna be able to go to clerk school as we had anticipated in July, but she will be going in December because the July school was booked, and all the backlog permits are now accounted for and current.
Any questions? Council, questions, comments?
Will these new warrants be entered into TCIC, NCIC?
The, as soon as a warrant is issued, it's, the police department can see it. So, and the same thing is when we remove it, it's immediate.
Chief, will you be confirming those through Grayson County?
So those will not be used in two months.
Okay.
They're considering losses, and in order to do that, we're gonna take the master's for this badge and this time, sure, probably the one I'm asking. So we're working with our RNS provider, those warrants we've ordered are RNSs, which we can see that we own people who have a master's warrant, so we should do that in the process.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Public Works, and then we'll do City Administrators, so Mr. Walker.
Mayor, Council. On the Public Works side, the guys carried out two hundred and forty-one service orders. Five new meters were set, six meter leaks were repaired, pothole patching using twenty-seven tons. Two water main leaks were repaired. Those were massive water main leaks, and we'll talk about that later. Twenty disconnections for move-outs, mowing of thirty-eight hours, two sewer main backups, and thirty-nine disconnects for non-payment. The Public Works Department had a hundred and six hours on, spent a hundred and six hours on wells, sampling, reporting, water quality, forty-two hours on new chemical analyzers, training staff, and making adjustments in the water production. All new chlorine and ammonia analyzers are up and running. Some fine tuning is still required by the SCADA technician, but we are operational on our wells after we have spent an enormous amount of money getting those up to service. All new sample stations have been installed successfully at sample points around town. This will allow us to sample water daily throughout the distribution system without having to sample water directly from the customer's house, which is somewhat of an inconvenience, and without that water passing through the customer's meter. So this is good for everybody. Auto flushers have been ordered, should arrive, or they should have already arrived by this date, and they're gonna be installed if they haven't already been. I haven't talked to Jerry on this. They may already be installed at North Hughes in an effort to remedy that yellow, yellowish water in that neighborhood. If you're on social media and you're like me, every time you see a yellow water posted on that infamous "How Goes It" page, I can look at that, that picture and tell you exactly where they live. And it's, it's either on Carter Street, or it's on North Hughes Street is where they live. Because those are the two only locations that we have left with the, where we don't have an auto flusher. But those, these two auto flushers are for that area, and that should resolve all the issues with the yellow water going forward, hopefully. From my side, you know, the typical developments, under, under development agreement, planned development is Noble Ridge, a hundred and seventy-one homes, Connections Park, Noble Ridge One B with Lennar Homes is underway, a hundred and seventy-seven homes, and they're submitting packets of nine permits per month, so they're moving pretty quickly. Ponorosa Point, commercial contracts have been signed. We're also reviewing the single-family portion of it, making sure Tim is kosher with, with their entrances and, and the Fire Department is okay with their, the number of entries for ambulance and fire service. The NRP group is under construction, as you can see, on the multifamily project, Grace Meadows, fifty-one half-acre lots. You know, they're free to move dirt, and I think they've done a little bit, but I think that's it. Hilltop Ranch, thirteen hundred and seventy-six homes. The, the wastewater treatment plant at Old Patterson and Blythe Road has been conveyed from the original owner to Hilltop. Hilltop now conveying the property to BBRT, and they'll be hopefully under construction here fairly soon with that sewer plant. That'll be the first one that goes through. And we're hoping about eighteen months after they possess the property. Saddleback is constructing the first of seven homes, or just about done with that first home. Nearing Development Agreement Plan Development, Howe Meadows, it formed a mud. We've talked about this before, seven hundred and sixty-two homes. Talbot Estates, we're working on the back end of the DA. We've got everything in line there for the water line to go through Central Park. We got the CCN from Luella. So now we're just waiting on the agreement from the Talbot side to bring that to fruition on that development agreement. Centurion American Development Group, six hundred and sixty-nine homes, and they purchased Phase Two and Three of Noble Ridge. Latest discussions with them is they're gonna go ahead and plat for Phase Two and Phase Three of the Noble Ridge. and phase three of the Noble Ridge portion without grouping it all together as they were talking about before. All of our street projects have been completed. I did, I did, uh, leave out Astra, uh, Companies. That's three hundred and fifty-five lots in between Howe High School and Lane Drive.
Sixty-five? Three sixty-five?
Three fifty-five. Unless I, could be three sixty-five. One of those. It's a lot of homes. Three sixty-five, you're correct. I was looking at, uh, the other, the other line. You're right. So the streets, um, they're all completed, uh, with at least one coat. And they'll come back and do another coat here at some point in the future. As far as personnel goes, uh, officer position, uh, has been named, who's here tonight. Just left. Um, he started on July twenty-eighth. We've, we, we've budgeted for another officer, which I'm sure Chief Sullivan is happy about and that person will start, uh, as soon as October first. Uh, wastewater BVRT is close to finalizing a land purchase. Is that still true? Okay. We're very fortunate, we're very, very fortunate this month with our sewer bill. I know last month I had talked to you about, we were in, uh, uncharted territories with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar sewer bill, the Sherman, which is unsustainable. And it got me thinking that we're going to have to make an adjustment, uh, at some point. I no longer think, I think we may not have to do that after this month's bill was eighteen thousand. Now, some reasons for that. One, we didn't get as much rainfall. Uh, and that's significant because we did have a lot of rainfall. Uh, number two, we had two massive water leaks last month that were in locations where Jerry says very, very well could have gotten into our sewer system. And those massive leaks made our water purchase from GTU A, instead of being seven million, made it sixteen million for the month. It also took our sewer bill from about typical fifty thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand. So I don't know whether it was the rain, I don't know whether it was a leak, combination of both, but I'm just glad to get an eighteen thousand dollar bill because that's by far the least we've ever, or I've ever seen, uh, in the number of years that I've been here. So that's good news and it make, it makes us reconsider having to do some things that we didn't want to do to the, to the sewer bill. Um, as far as water, we've located some areas on North Hughes Street. I talked about that a moment ago in Carter that require auto flushers and, and those are on their way. Um, there's a contract on seven acres on East Duke Street for a flex warehouse development that will begin, uh, uh, will begin in phases due to the number of sewer taps. There's two sewer taps on the site, which we can free up and let them go ahead and utilize. But until BVRT, uh, gets going and, and we can open up more taps, they're going to be on hold to finish out that till, till they're able to do so. On the utility side, we have twelve hundred and fifteen active accounts, um, from June twenty-third to July twenty-second. That brought in two hundred and thirteen thousand four ninety-seven forty-five. Uh, we received payments of two hundred and fifty thousand six thirty-five thirty-five. Uh, breaking that down, solid waste, thirty-seven thousand sixty-three dollars, sewer, eighty-four thousand, eight, seven hundred and forty dollars and water, ninety-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. That's a total of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The total amount, uh, bill, current bill for August, two hundred and twenty-three thousand four forty thirty-two. Now our GTU A water consumption, this is where we were talking about with our massive water leaks. I think I put this in your packet, uh, July twenty-twenty-five CGMA monthly consumption report. You can see what Melissa Anna Van Osteen consumes and then compare to what we consume. You know, we're, we're not too, too terribly far behind them, but you can see the big number there in June of sixteen million gallons. And if you look, we, we typically do seven, five, six, five, five, six, six, seven, six, seven, and then sixteen stands out like a sore thumb. Those were those massive water leaks that were in heavily wooded areas that we couldn't locate, no one could even see because they were in heavily wooded areas. Uh, luckily we found those and corrected that situation. And then there's a chart behind that, but that's all I have.
Comments or questions from the counsel?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, now we have a report from BVRT Two. I think Mr. Cooley is going to, um, possibly give us a presentation.
All right, I can just, I used to do a lot of presentations and then I had this gentleman that he'd been doing it for a long time and he said that, uh, he goes, if you rely on technology, it's going to fail you. And I go, what do you do? And he goes, I had these college students, I would pay them to do all my presentations on the flip charts. So he'd ride around with all his presentations on flip charts and, you know.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah, it was cheap for college students. They needed money. So he was like, yeah. So I, I can go ahead and start and then he can, if he can get that going. I can just do a little bit introduction here. Like I said, I'm Jeff Cooley with BVRT Water Utility Company and, um, I think we're, we're all excited about the opportunity here and what's happening and, uh, you know, I know we're excited on our end. And for me myself, personally, um, I started my sort of management career in a very similar sized talent as Howe, as we're doing overseeing water and wastewater. So I, I fully understand the challenges that you face, um, when, you know, when Monty's talking, I'm just, I, I get kind of like PTSD of like, I remember all of that, uh, the challenges that you have and, but, you know, for one thing, I think you've got a very good city crew and I'll go into that in a minute of Howe. We've worked with them already. But the, uh, the actual, this, this is not on the presentation, but the, the, uh, so with the agreement that was signed, I believe in April, that, uh, with BVRT, uh, Two Utility, Water Utility Company, there was a, uh, uh, one of the, uh, the, the, the agreement was that we would present a, um, transition plan by October first. Our goal is to kind of meet that by a couple of weeks or, or more in September or, you know, before. And, uh, but tonight what I want to do is, uh, then, uh, okay, so you'll run that, Jeff? Okay. So, so tonight what I wanted to do is like, just kind of give, like, people are curious about what's happening, what's going on. And I want to just kind of give an update of what is happening because there is a lot of, a lot of things happening and some people may or may not realize what's going on. Uh, next slide, Jeff. So on the, uh, transition plan, and then again, when we do the, the actual transition plan, we present it to you, uh, it's a very detailed document and these are just sort of the highlights of it. So part of the objectives is, one is to maintain, of course, uninterrupted wastewater collective services for Howe residents and businesses. We want to make sure we, we either achieve or sustain compliance, we need TCUQ requirements. Uh, uh, there's particular with, you know, when you're doing about, you know, domestic wastewater systems, there is a specific TCUQ, uh, reg for that. And also, you know, EPA Clean Water regulations, we want to make sure that anything we do, we're going to be staying in compliance with anything that, uh, that is ahead of us. Uh, the other one is minimize operational disruptions, ensure a smooth transfer of our responsibilities. And I think with, uh, what we're working with right now, with the sort of the relationship we're building, uh, not with the Howe staff, but also with Sherman staff, I think that's going to work well. Next slide. So the other parts of it is again, working cooperatively with the City of Sherman, because you know, they're, we're going to have to be working with them prior to, if, if everybody's familiar, there, you know, the, the flow goes to Sherman and, and prior to a, a treatment plant coming online, that flow is still going to have to go to Sherman for wherever time period in between that's going to happen once we, we, we sort of take over the system. And, uh, so we're, um, making sure that any of the, the requirements that Sherman has for pre-treatment fog programs, fog means, you know, fatsoils and grease, that is a huge problem in wastewater sewer system. And so we're working closely with them on making sure that any kind of monitoring or anything that needs to take place, that we're, we're well aware of that. Also working with the City of Howe staff, uh, all staff that's involved to ensure we want to make sure transparency and coordination and make sure everybody's aware of, hey, here's where we're headed. There's nothing that we're going to do like, we don't want any surprises of anything that's going to come up. Uh, enhance system resilience through targeted infrastructure assessments and repair planning efforts, efforts. That's underway also and we're, we're going through that in a minute of what's happening. Uh, establish robust financial and contractual frameworks for cost-effective and sustainable operations. Of course, that's going to be a, a big, uh, big issue. Want to make sure that the, uh, you know, the, the burden on the citizens of Howe is, uh, you know, like going to be a lot of questions of like, hey, you're building a new plant out there, you're doing this, all these things are happening, how is it going to affect us? And, uh, so we want to make sure that when we get into the sort of the stakeholder type meetings and things like that, we want to invite everyone into those to make sure they can ask any questions they have on that. And then that, that leads into like, you know, you want to foster public confidence through proactive communication, transparency along stakeholders. Uh, stakeholders, again, that's counsel, staff, City of Sherman, us, uh, community developers. It's a whole long list of who the stakeholders are, including the citizens here, the, the ratepayers. And, uh, we want to make sure that we've, we're, we're developing sort of like a communication plan that just goes along to make sure that, uh, you know, we, we think of those questions before they're being asked, basically. We want to make sure we get those out there. Next slide. So what are the steps that you'll see in the, uh, transition plan? Uh, first is a system assessment. Uh, and of course, everyone knows the inflow infiltration is such a big issue for the system here, manhole inspections, lift station inspections. And, and again, those, those are some of the things we're already doing. Uh, and of course, there's going to be an operational transition period, uh, that's going to happen, uh, once we take over the system, regulatory compliance. Uh, again, that's going to be, uh, communicating with TCUQ and making sure they're, they're aware of who the new operator of the system is and make sure that we develop a good relationship with, uh, with the regulators. Uh, financial and contractual considerations, the infrastructure proposed upgrades, as you know, not only the plant, but there's going to be work done inside the collection system to make sure that, um, you know, we, we're replacing lines, upgrading lift stations, doing certain things that is going to make the system run better. And again, the whole goal is, you know, always used to be told is like, you know, when I was a, a young guy doing this in the, in this business, you know, the guy who said like, you know, keep, you know, your, your wastewater sewer is go, is below ground and your goal is to keep it below ground, right? You don't, anything that comes up, uh, that's bad news. And, uh, and it was always one of those where the, uh, you know, the one thing about working in this industry, I always used to tell my staff is that, you know, you really may or may not get recognized until something goes wrong. You know, a, a large leak, you know, an overflow, those type things. Uh, but again, I think the citizens appreciate what you're doing. Uh, the public communication engagement and also we talked about, you know, we're going to have stakeholder commitment and those will be kind of laid out in plans and how we're going to do that. I think Jeff, you're going to go over the, uh, the, uh, the sort of second.
Hopefully, what we really hope you guys see tonight is, is it has been since April. There's a lot going on right now and it's kind of like that duck on the pond. It's underwater right now, but we will be doing some construction and some other things that'll be more apparent in the coming months. So a couple of things that are kind of prerequisite to what we're trying to do in the transition. The CNN, which, uh, some of you are pretty familiar with, some of you probably heard about, but may not be as familiar with. We have to be put included on this, uh, the CCN, uh, certificate of convenience and necessity with the city. It's my electric personnel. No. So we are working to get that done. We've been working on mapping to get that done. We've been working on all the application process. We have to refine some budget, come up with some CIP processes for that. And we are ready to submit that probably in the next couple of weeks. So we've been working with our attorneys to do that. You guys will get a chance to see all of that. What that first step, if some of you may recall this, it's a multi-step process. That first step is to get us on the facility CCN that the city has. So we'll become a dual CCN holder with the city and the facility CCN that the city has. And then once we do that, the next step is to work with Sherman to get the area CCN transferred over. That's will also be dual between us and the city for the entire, well, not the entire city limits, but the part that Sherman covers currently in their CCN. So we are working hard on that. Hopefully we'll have that ready to submit in the next couple of weeks. The Sherman contract amendment, and I want to assure everybody that when I put that up there, or we put that up there, I was like, I don't want you to think we've been negotiating this. We're looking through this, trying to figure out what we think may need to be changed in that, how we would work that out. That's something that we'll come back to the city with, Monty, Mr. Sidwell, all of you guys, to let you see what we're trying to do before we begin those negotiations. We have had some preliminary discussions way, way before we got into all of this and they are very receptive to keeping that contract in place, making sure that we can have a smooth transition to get a plant built and still have the availability of their plant for a period of time. And so we think we're well within those time limits. It's just making sure that that contract's going to work and then we can get that switched through. This has acquisition of Worf One. We should have put Worf Two on here also. Worf One is actually the one that's going to serve Hilltop. And the only reason that one's actually moving a little bit quicker is they already had a discharge permit, they already had the land. So as Monty said, that land has been transferred over to the Hilltop, uh, group. That's going to be transferred over to us pretty quick along with the permit. Again, we're, we're working tomorrow to finalize some stuff with them on the documents that we have with them. We're hoping all the transfers will take place in the next couple of weeks and then we can actually begin designing and implementation of everything we need to do to get that plant going. At the same time, we are still diligently working on the land that we are acquiring for the north plant also. And that land, we're, we're in a due diligence phase. We're finalizing some of the due diligence that we need to do for that and we think that acquisition will take place within the next thirty days. So that could be a little bit of holdup in that, trying to get some of the last things we need to get done, like geotech surveying work that's, that's being finalized and getting that back to us to give us a chance to review that, but that's coming along as well. Once that land is acquired, that's when we can then go in and apply for a permit, for a discharge permit for that. So you can't do that before we have the land. Once we get the land, then we'll start that process. Any questions about any of that?
Yeah, what, what am I, just so everybody, everybody's clear, when he says Worf, not Wolf, Worf, Water Resource Recovery Facility. And, uh, one of my goals has always been like to get people to stray away from using the term sewage treatment plant. It was like, that was a term in the seventies and then, uh, then officially became wastewater treatment plant. And then recently the term water resource recovery facility is actually the industry term is that they use because, you know, using wastewater, it is a, it is a resource that you can utilize. Uh, and then the treatment methods that we're going to be using is membrane filtration plants, which is a very sophisticated type of, 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 of a treatment method. And those can be used for like irrigation or anything you want to use for that. So, um, but that's sort of like my side goal is to, to get people to understand that it is sort of like, uh, you know, it is a resource if you want to use that. So I, I want to go into, so what's happening so far? So, um, I know I've been coming here since, I believe, January. I think there was snow when I was down at the loom one time and I was sliding all over. Um, and so we've been, uh, we've been here doing a lot of stuff ever since that time, the beginning of the year. Uh, one of the things is communication and with the, uh, the, uh, current staff and with J and J Services. And, uh, I want to get a shout out to those guys that they have been very, very helpful, very forthcoming. Uh, I went to their offices early on and I'm like, hey, what do you have? All the documents, background, um, anything you got from TCUQ? And, uh, they were very helpful in getting that information. And they were very helpful in getting that information. We were actually here this morning with a couple of the staff going out, also looking again at some of the manholes and looking at the couple of lift stations, kind of getting some more eyes on that and also going out to the loom. Because a couple of people that was with us, those four in our group, a couple hadn't seen those yet. So we were out this morning doing that. One of the other things is that we're having these recurring meetings with the City of Sherman staff, mainly their pre-treatment staff, but lately they've been bringing in more sort of the other staff on the wastewater side. And those are, those are twofold. One is to build a relationship with them because of course, we're going to have to be working with them. Then also to answer sort of questions they may have of what's going on and make sure, again, we talked about the transparency part. We want to make sure that they're fully aware of exactly where we're at and what's happening because they have questions, you know, when do these things are going to happen? And, you know, one of the things that they allowed us to, like, if you, the metering loom that you have for the City of Howe and then right outside of that, before you get to the road, there's actually that metering, there's a meter that the City of Sherman uses. And they actually granted us access to that to get online and we can see real-time data. So we're trying to look at, right now, we're trying to look at like comparing like the flow meter that you have versus what they're metering. And what we find is sometimes is like when it, when it gets real high and in that box and a lot of times that it just kind of goes a little crazy and we're not getting accurate readings. So that's why I'll talk about that in a minute, what we're going to be doing with some of that, trying to get some information on that. So we've implemented what we call a computerized maintenance management system already. That's up and running and we're in the process of entering all the manholes that you have. I think you have 242 manholes in the system that we know of. And so we're trying to get all that information entered into that system. And then the two lift stations, that's going to be your main access when you start off. So once we, that's going to be in place and the GIS is going to be part of that. So once we sort of take over the system, we're going to have all that information ready to go. And that's going to be before like documenting, like if we do any repairs, upgrades, all that's going to be entered into that for historical data. Next slide. So I talked about what we're working on. So what we decided was, was that, you know, we want to get, we're going to be putting these like, they're flow meters, they're going to be attached to the, like the manholes. And we're going to be putting them in like different parts of the system that we fill. And that's what we was doing this morning, we're trying to find like, what are some key areas that you might know of? That's the problem areas and the guys this morning were real good about helping us with that. And so the goal is to put five of those in the system and then also two rain gauges. And we're looking at hopefully get those installed by April. And what that's going to give us is when you have the rain events, you know, the high-flow events, it's going to give us better information of maybe where that's coming from. We don't know if we might find like smoking gun type thing where like all of a sudden this line, it just goes, you know, high flows come from that area. But it's going to give us a better idea of what, you know, what the flows are out in the system. And we'll have real-time data on that. We're going to be able to access that just as we like with the other flow meter. Go ahead, next slide. So some of the other stuff that's kind of going on, collecting record drawings, development plans, system capacity map. They're doing all the site evaluation, sidewalks, you know, all the different properties, they're doing that work. There's some floodplain studies that going on to determine, you know, all the developmental areas. Next slide. Again, again, thanks Tim, coordinating with Tim on some of this review process. Our engineering section division, they're doing, they did one of the wastewater plan reviews for Hilltop Phase, Ranch Phase 1. And there's another one that they're going to review on La Colorosa. And also part of it is drafting design standards and specifications for Howe regional projects. And we're sort of looking at some like what does Sherman do, what do surrounding communities have? And try to like, sort of like look at, you know, work with the city and see, you know, when you're going to be doing like, you know, projects, new projects, it's a plant or whatever. It's always good to have like these spec specifications, design type stuff. So when a contractor comes, you hand them that and say, look, you need to follow this. If you don't have those, then you're kind of left up to the contractor sometimes to make those decisions. Next. So that's our update. And again, like I said, there's other things, you know, there's other things happening. The wheels are spinning everywhere. There's this sort of, was more directed toward like the operational part of the transition plan. And again, all the other staff at DDRG Water and Toilet Company is working on a lot of different other areas as you know. And then with that, do you have any other questions, have any questions that you have?
I just want to say, I really appreciate our friends with the City of Sherman for working with us and appreciate you, Mr. Cooley and Mr. Caldwell from, for giving us an update. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Looking forward to when this transition happens. We'll, again, we'll be, we'll be given the transition, we'll probably give it up like, kind of like a draft to give you time to comment on it and make sure that, you know, we don't want to like just, here it is. We're going to have like a draft that you'll be able to review before it goes final.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our action items. Number two, discuss, consider, enact upon investment report. Mr. Walker.
This is on. Mayor, Council. For the month of July, we accrued 9,568.90 in interest with all of our city-owned accounts. The EDC accrued $1,599.22. Logic is currently yielding 4.39%, while Techstar is yielding 4.29%. For the year, we've accrued $54,432. Of that, $41,011 has come since we initiated our investment policy back in April. The EDC for the year has accrued $7,586.20, of which $5,559.66 has come since we initiated our investment policy. So as you can see, the work that we did back in April is significantly paying off in interest. Our August report showed sales tax for the City of Howe is $72,175. Cities on pace for a total of $736,848. That monthly amount is the second highest amount for the 24, 25 budget year. And of that amount, the EDC will receive $18,043.83. The EDC's on pace to close out at $184,212.01. And I've included the breakdowns in the packet of each account and the balances.
I think that's a pretty awesome report. Thank you, Mr. Walker, for heading that up originally. Council, do you have any questions or discussion on this item? And if not, do we have a motion to approve the investment report? Is that Chad? Ed, sorry. I couldn't see anybody's mouth moving. All right, so that was, Ed made the motion and Chad is going to make a second. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none are opposed, motion passes. Number three, discuss, consider, enact upon a digital billboard sign to be placed at Summit Gardens. And I believe Mr. Coffey has a quick presentation for us.
Let me introduce Mr. Coffey first. I'll give you a synopsis of this. The Howe Area Chamber of Commerce is making a commitment to provide a double-faced LED 3x6-foot billboard sign on the southwest property corner of Summit Gardens, it's right over here. The sign will be used for chamber EDC and city announcements, boil notices, things of that matter. And it will also be used for billboard advertising for the chamber. This is city-owned property, therefore it requires city council approval before placing this sign on the property. Mr. Jared Coffey, the Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce, will make a presentation to you at this time.
The chamber over the years has tried to remain creative to present new and innovative ways for our members. And we have found that a high-resolution dual-phase video board might just be the thing. It's obviously a small revenue source for the chamber. We anticipate about 15% of the usage would be obviously free to city, fire, school systems. We can promote election cycles, outages, bonds, elections. We can do anything with this thing. It's remote, programmable, it's updated via internet, it's a pretty simple concept. The last thing we want to get into is a bunch of artwork that people are submitting and, you know, obviously our chamber is pretty cohesive in a couple of areas, so, you know, no political, nothing outlandish. It would all be approved by us before uploading to the board. It is a high resolution, so we worked tirelessly, this was about a three-year project for us, to not go base model, no knock on any church in America, but we didn't want a Baptist light bright board. We wanted something that was awesome because our chamber is awesome. And so we found a company, we went through about 910 companies before we landed on these guys. And what it consists of in the drawing, it's a concrete footing, it's a steel frame, has a wrap for the chamber to promote us and then the two-side high-resolution video board. It requires power, we will have to service power to this corner here. And then it requires an ethernet connection, it's just a wifi broadcast tube. Best part is it's controlled remotely. We would like to give the ISD access to that. They can upload school start dates, closures, weather events, it's all free to them. Where we found it most beneficial is social media is great. It's not for everyone. I found personally a few years ago, and this was during Freezergette, I couldn't find, I'd had to go to the City of Howe website and then the school board and then the Howe Youth Sports website to find dates and information on a phone, sitting down. And this board gives us the opportunity to get all that in one spot. So we're driving by it, we can broadcast what all of these dates affect. The older groups here that may not be able to go into the social media sites repeatedly to find these dates. That's the first item. Second side, new businesses come in, old businesses are here. It's very attractive for a new business to put their logo or X-ray or phone number or information there. So we think it serves multi-facet across the board for the city and for the businesses here. We are ready to move on it. We would need to pre-sale based on our packages for this. And it rolls across many boards, as it scroll up for three seconds with a full-size ad, we split it, people get to share that. Those intricacies are to come because it could go, the sky's the limit with this. We can't really move that far into it without knowing the real estate of that. And so it's just had my hand here is the chamber. Our second source of income for the Chamber of Commerce is found today. It's about 77 hours of manpower for $900 profit. It's not very much money. And so we would like to take the chamber to the next level. This is just one puzzle piece of that and we just can't do it without you guys. And so at the forefront of doing it, all of you are first to that. So that's where we're at. Questions, comments, concerns for the?
Council, questions?
The only question I'd have for it is the height.
It's in that.
I mean, so what I mean by that is the height that it's demonstrated now, would that kind of restrict people from seeing it? Like for say, say for instance, that truck's on the other side, if I'm coming from?
I'll tell you this, we toyed with about 11 locations from the side of City Hall to the side of, stop sign even in front of the post office. That's what we were talking about. We really warped around this intersection in every facet. And here in particular, it's about man height, I think it sits at 6 foot tall. It doesn't impede, we have some shrubbery here that we will work to kind of groom that back. It's off the road, it's, there's no easements there, it actually sits right in the garden. And I think it would add a tasteful attributes to the garden there too.
Okay.
So no impede on driving, you know, no impede on?
That and I was thinking some mischievous kid having access to throw. So I don't know if there's like a, you know, kind of?
It's a proxy server, it's protected.
Exactly.
So unhackable, oh well, unhackable. That upload artwork has to be approved by us. So the notion that some kid logged in there and put something on there, we get a scrolling real-time of what is being displayed.
Okay.
And so if profanity or something was hacked into it, it's very unlikely. I'm not saying it's impossible, but according to the gentleman that proposes to us, the proxy and the security level is like any other.
Does, does this, would this be required to be insured?
Well, if you look in there, earmarks some very lean, this, I mean, even at the middle of the budget, this warranty for this particular sign company was the highest of all. It goes up to a 10th warranty mark. So I don't feel necessarily, you know, unless you guys go to the table here and say, hey, it's on city property, there may be an amendment to what this property sits on for insurance. I feel it's unlikely, you know.
Because I think that's something that we need to look at. Does it need to be?
Insurance for if somebody was to wreck into it or insurance if it was to catch fire, burn the whole town down or something like that, I don't know.
Well, that, that might be something that is looked at.
It's an LED board, it's the equivalency of four light bulbs here.
Okay.
So in terms of voltage, it's a low voltage video board.
And I had mentioned to another city council member that maybe possibly think about putting a camera that is, I don't know if it's attached to this building and faced that direction, just for vandalism?
CCTV people maybe, maybe Mr. Tipp will affiliate in further. But filming public streets and doing some filming, you may have to go a little further in that. Now, if we had a camera that was specific to maybe this video board?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that, above my pay grade. But the video board in and of itself, yeah, vandalism can occur. But the way it's enclosed is with the epoxy front and everything, it's very cleanable, it's UV protected. There's a lot of, I mean, they're everywhere, they're all over towns. This one happens to be better than most.
Does the chief have any concerns?
No, we actually had a little bit of some build as a long way of road, light pile and issues.
I see.
Okay.
I see it benefiting Chief Canadian, Chief quite a bit, just with guys who run an event, school bond. The bond that we really needed, the town to get behind, when people didn't know about it, could have been blasted on this thing. And that was during Founders Day. We're talking about hundreds, thousands of people, of course, here listening to this. We want to do it as tasteful as possible.
Sure. I see all the benefits for sure. Does, Council, do you, anyone, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Covered in the warranty, acts of God, force majeure in the contract shows that force majeure act of God does go away.
Is it, is it hail damage? In other words, is it susceptible to hail damage?
Yeah, so the, I'm not sure what the gauge of the metal surround that's in it. Yes, so the, I'm not sure what the gauge of the metal surround that's in it, but these guys are reputable, they have tens of thousands of these units across state Texas and some in the country, and we've seen them. I mean, some of them have been out there for five to seven years, they look the same as anything. Now, the final wrap that we elected to put on it, that could be a three or four-year type of thing, the final wrapping over the course of an install on a sign like that, it's under four, five, or twelve, so the Chamber will maintain all that. Pretty low risk to the city, a lot of benefits for you guys, that's for y'all.
They're pretty tough.
They're pretty tough signs. These churches have them everywhere, and like their First Baptist has, Methodist has one, and I hate to say it, we'll have three in a row, but this one is a high-resolution screen. This is a little different. Yeah, it doesn't look like a Light Bright, I don't know how old you guys are, but...
Pretty little.
Light Bright was the brightest, yeah. We see a bright future in this sign, but, yeah. Yeah, I've got lots of bullet points, but I think that covers most of it.
Any other questions or comments from the counsel? All right, thank you, Mr. Coffee, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, number three, discuss, consider, and act upon digital billboard sign to be placed at Summit Gardens. Does the counsel wish to discuss this item further, and if you do not, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the billboard.
Ricky wants to make a motion to approve the billboard. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy will make a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. By the way, we do have a great City Council, or not City Council, Chamber, we have a great council, too. Number four, discuss, consider, and act upon professional services agreement with WSB to provide a water model study for a one-million-gallon elevated storage tank not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy dollars. And our engineer, Mr. Porter, is here, I believe, to, or who's giving, Mr. Walker giving a, Mr. Porter?
Y'all made a mistake, I have an engineer come up here, talk to you. I'm gonna, Mayor, counsel, I appreciate y'all allowing me to come up here and talk with you a little bit about this. I'm gonna try and keep it short. Right now, WSB keeps a water system model, but it's a very skeletal model of your existing system. There's a lot of, as y'all know, there's a lot of development coming, and with that development's going to require expansion of your water system. What this model does is it, it, we kind of use that skeletal model, but we improve upon it, and then we basically map out the future of what the city's water system's going to look like. So, as the counsel item mentions, the elevated tank, that's only a small portion of what this is about. This is all different, from pump stations to, you know, everything that the Howe is eventually going to need in their water system, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're looking to put together here. Just a couple of highlights, the advantages that having a master water plan brings to Howe. It helps predict your future water demand based on your population growth and/or your land use. It guides where to expand or upgrade your water mains and your pump stations and elevated tanks. We are, we're actually on the hunt to try and figure out the sizing of an elevated tank, and to do that, a water system model is needed for that. It prevents existing infrastructure from being overwhelmed with all of the new development that's coming in. It's a great tool for capital improvement planning, so for your future plan for capital projects, and prioritizing your investments. And it supports rate studies, impact fee calculations, and ensures that new developments, that can ensure that new developments pay their fair share when they come in. So, all that being said, I've got a lot of extra details in here, but I'll just, I'll stop there and ask if y'all have any questions about the details.
Counsel, you have any questions for Mr. Porter or Mr. Walker?
Oh, come on.
We're an easy crowd.
I usually get one, at least one question from my engineers.
Monty's gonna drum something up.
I just want to state real quick that as we're growing, our water needs are going to be increasing rapidly. And getting in front of this, and now's the time, because at some point, if we don't, we're going to have pressure tanks on every development that comes through Howe. It's not good for the developers, it's not good for us. So, you know, it's a, this is a big dream, okay? Sometimes we have to dream big. And a million-gallon water tower EST is a big dream. It's not something we can't do, because we have developer funds that are partnering with us, and we have some funds to initiate this thing. And the first part of this dream is, is this water plant by WSB, so I just wanted to state that further back.
So, can I ask, or maybe get you to make a comment, on if we were to have this one-million-gallon elevated storage tank, and there were a water outage, let's say a water leak, the benefits of having the elevated storage tower is what?
So, we'd still have our other water sources, well two, well three, well four, and those being isolated, we wouldn't have an issue with, with water loss from the customers. I don't want to say ever, but, because there are rare circumstances, but this gives us access to a lot of water at any given moment where we can isolate it throughout town.
So the possibility of that hap, being without water decreases?
That's correct. So, having water in an elevated storage allows for water distribution even in times when you lose power. Right now, if your water is on the ground or under the ground, you need some sort of pump system to get it out, and to get it and pressurize the system. If you have a water tower, it provides that even when ice storms and whatever come through. I've dealt with that before, it is, it can be scary, but, yeah, it provides kind of a backup, waters placed up in the tower. At least it provides a small amount of backup, and then it provides kind of residual pressure in the system. Right now, the issues that a lot of developments are seeing, when we're putting numbers into our skeletal model, is that they're not able to meet pressure demands for fire flow. And so, elevated, the elevated tower provides pressures, if I go back to your, your high school knowledge of water levels and such, but it provides pressure in your system even if you don't have any control.
I would like to add that, you know, in the last couple of years, big challenges in this city have been water and sewer. A million-gallon water EST would solve our issues water-wise for three or four decades, I would imagine. So...
This would prove that.
Yeah, and this, yeah, and that, his water study would prove that. So, that's what we're looking for. You know, over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of work going into improving infrastructure. Wastewater, and now water, we're trying to get that resolved, and those are long-term fixes for this, for the City of Howe and the citizens of Howe, and the future citizens that we don't even know yet.
Absolutely. All right, counsel, do you have any other questions or discussion on this matter?
So if we know an elevated storage tank will solve the water issue for the next three or four decades, why do we need to pay one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars for a study to prove that?
Well, the one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars is not just for the elevated water tank, it's for the pipeline system and all the supporting pumps and whatever for the future. It's to plan for future projects. So when a development comes in, you already have planned where your, where you're planning your water mains are going to be going, how they're going to be routed, and then you can hand that over to a developer and say, "Hey, y'all need to build, you know, or help us build these water lines in this area, because it's already been studied, these are the pressures you're going to get when you do that." Number one, number two, Monty keeps saying the million-dollar water tower, but we, a million dollar, a million gallon water tower, but we don't know that a million gallons is what it's going to take. We need to prove it up with numbers as to exactly how big that water tower needs to be, to cover the whole city and how long that's going to cover the school. So, it's, it's more of a future planning effort than simply the putting in line for a, for one.
So essentially, we have to back up what we want with facts?
Correct, yes, I mean, we've been, you know, as Monty had mentioned earlier, we've been dealing with several developers who are, you know, who are all asking the same question. Where do we put the tank? How big should the tank be? How tall should it be? You know, and those are all ideas that are all fleshed out. Like, you could, you could design one based on what you have today, but if you do, it may not support your future system. So you really need to plan that system, so that what you build today can and will last you for the decades to come.
Plus, this is something that we're planning on asking future developers to try to help participate financially to fund the, the elevated storage tank.
And I think that's a very good question, Mr. Ingram, because that's a question that we're going to get from developers. You know, you say you want a million-gallon, you know, EST, prove it up, and this is what proves it up and where it goes.
Any other comments or questions?
So our, our normal consumption rate, I don't know if you know that, you probably do, you're good, say, wells two, three, four go down, the pumps aren't running, we can't get gas to the generators, if we do have three-quarters of a million in the tank, how long does that last?
Today or ten years from now?
We'll split, I'll split it with you, we'll go five.
And is it the summer or the winter? Because, you know, if you, people are watering...
Well, ice storms, so we'll go winter.
To be honest with you, as your city grows, it's obviously, it's going to be so much less, less time. But I mean, if you can get, if you can get one day out of it, it gives your public works crews and it gives people time to get the system right, so you're not boiling water. It just, it gives you a little bit of time, so. I couldn't tell, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, as smart as I am and as awesome as I am, I can't, I couldn't tell you exactly.
But that was what I was going for, it will give us three days, four days.
It could, yeah, today, I mean, especially prior to a lot of these new homes coming in, yeah, it would give you a significant amount of time, but that, you know, of course, once all of the new homes come in...
Any other questions or comments from the counsel? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky's making a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Five, discuss, consider, and act upon preliminary plat and final plat for Texoma Empire. That was something earlier P&amp;Z had talked about, or they voted on, and Monty, go ahead and give them an update, it's been a little bit...
Planning and zoning commission approved this a couple of hours ago. Yeah, this is a replat of some property along 902 East. It's been purchased by Texoma Empire, and they have submitted both preliminary and final plat. Fees have been paid, we had Tim, our city engineer, review the plans, and he approved the plans, so our city staff recommends approval on this replat.
Does counsel have any questions or comments on this? And if not, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Sean is going to make a motion to approve the preliminary and final plat for Texoma Empire. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ed is making a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Number six, discuss, consider, and act upon Amendment One of Construction Contract with Texas Department of Agricultural, Young Street Sanitary Sewer and Street Improvements, CDV two-dash-zero-zero-five-five with Quality Excavation LLC.
Mayor, counsel, this, this block grant that we've got, that we had for Young Street, there was sewer repair and street work that's being redone over there, there was some paperwork, clerical hiccups that were involved, and I'll let Mr. Porter describe those and give this exact information in detail.
Well, y'all get to hear me twice tonight. I'm gonna just pee, I'm just gonna peel the top layer off of this, and then y'all can maybe ask if I want, I've got a whole page of notes, and I wasn't planning on getting up here and running through all those notes unless you all had more questions. Essentially, I'll just give you the overview. So, as you all know, there is the sanitary sewer replacement project on Young Street. Contractor's been out there and has done the work. That project is being funded through a grant opportunity. We were notified, grant opportunity through the Texas Department of Agriculture, the TDA. The TDA, several weeks ago, I guess a couple of months ago now, called and notified the city that, due to a discrepancy that they found in the original bid for the project, that they could not award the grant based on what was approved by counsel. So, we did a deep dive with the TDA, trying to find out what we could do to make things right. Essentially, what had happened is that there was one bid item that was on one of the deductive alternates to the bid, that, in which the contractor wrote down an incorrect unit price for one of their items. We talked with the contractor about it prior to award, and they agreed to, the, the unit price didn't match the base bid price, so they agreed that those needed to match, and so that was fixed before it was brought to counsel for award. We were notified that that was not the right way to go about doing that, even though it was, you know, I've seen it done several times before, but we worked closely with the TDA to figure out what they wanted to do to fix that error. So, what, what we wound up doing is, we are issuing this amendment that you see before you here tonight, which, what it does is it removes all of the deductive add alternate bid items from that bid, and it removes the subsequent change order number one that was approved for that project, and it kind of resets the stage back to the base bid amount. The next item on your agenda this evening is the change order that accompanies this amendment, and that change order essentially updates the quantities and the unit prices so that, at the end of the day, the exact same amount is being paid to perform the work for this project. It just, it's just a paperwork thing that needed to be updated. We've talked about the solution with the TDA, and they, they've read through the documents, and they're okay with the solution, and we thought this be the best. First of all, they came to us and said, "Hey, we need to rebuild the whole project." Contractor was half done with the construction, so, I think it was, you know, it's a testament to, you know, to Monty and to the public management group, that we were able to talk with TDA, to kind of come to the table, and this is what we've all decided. So, after, upon approval, if you all so are willing, upon approval of this amendment and then the next item, the following change order, that we'll be back hold again, and we'll be able to take advantage of that grant.
Any questions from the council?
What were the, what's the downside of approving this?
Not approving this, the downside is that, basically, we, we lose the funding for the, for the grant.
City's going to be at a disadvantage, right?
Yes. A little less than that, but yes.
City staffs, city staff requests approval for this.
All right. Any questions or comments from the council? So, discuss, consider, and act upon Amendment One of Construction Contract with Texas Department of Agricultural, Young Street Sanitary Sewer and Street Improvements, CDV 2-0055 with Quality Excavation LLC. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. And do I have a second? Chad makes a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None are opposed, motion passes. Number two, or seven, discuss, consider, and act upon a change order, number two, of Construction Contract with Texas Department of Agriculture, Young Street Sanitary Sewer and Street Improvements, CDV 23-0055 with Quality Excavation LLC. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ricky makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Ed makes a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Number eight, discuss, consider, and act upon the proposed tax rate for 2025-2026. We will first open this up for a public hearing for the proposed tax rate for 2025, 2026. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak up in regards to the proposed tax rate. Okay, since we do not have anyone that is wanting to have a discussion, I'm going to close the public hearing and return to regular session. Monty.
Mayor, council, after careful consideration, I feel it's in our best interest to keep our tax rate at the voter approval rate, which will actually lower our tax rate by about five cents to 0.484477. Again, that's significantly lower than the 0.5364279 a year ago. As valuations have increased over the last year by $31.5 million for the city of Howe, in turn, the voter approval rate decreases. We've talked about this and we've seen this. Valuations keep going up, therefore, tax rates keep going down. So we can keep every, the taxpayers on kind of an even level, so that not as much money is coming out of the pocket of the taxpayer. But with that tax rate, it still allows us to fund more than we did last year by a little bit. So we'll be able to function manageably with this tax, with this tax rate. Anything above that tax amount, that tax rate amount, will trigger an opportunity for citizens to protest, or registered voters to protest. So, we're, we're at kind of the limit of where we can go, and we've reduced it by five cents. So I think this is a, a good rate. Again, this is a proposed tax rate. We'll have to come back next month and do a final tax rate. And we'll require a, a record vote from each of you. Instead of just yay or nay, this will require going individually down the line for, for a record vote. The M&amp;O rate is 0.418429, and the INS debt rate, which is interest and sinking, that's 0.066048. We have a debt obligation of $159,000 in principal and $10,425.65 in interest. Excuse me, this coming fiscal year. The GTUA debt payments are made through the city utility sales, not part of the INS. So we feel like this is the best case scenario and the best rate we can put forward. Any questions on that?
Counsel, you have any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I motion to keep our proposed tax rate to the voter approval rate of 0.484477 cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy makes a motion. Ricky makes a second. All in, oh, this item requires a recorded individual vote. So when I call your name, please say yay if you are for it and nay if you are against it. Mr. Billy Ingram?
Yay.
Mr. Ricky Price?
Yay.
Mr. Sean Tyler?
Yay.
Mr. Chad Woods?
Yay.
Mr. Ed Whitfield?
Yay.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously to accept the proposed tax rate. Item number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon the proposed budget for 2025, 2026. Mr. Walker?
Mayor, council, again, after careful consideration and calculations, our proposed budget amount will be $7,555,340.25, with revenues expected of $7,85,340.25. This leaves an ending balance of $11,634.94. Key changes for this year's budget, mostly initiated with the Howe Police Department, as their budget has increased significantly as we try to hire more officers. We have initiated a STEP program and pay to attract quality officers. The salary budget will allow for a PD assistant and one additional officer. Also, as of October 1st, we will eliminate the part-time code enforcement position and bring that responsibility into the Howe Police Department with Officer Terry McFadden taking over that role. Also, the, the PD will handle animal control issues, which will allow us to discontinue our service contract with All American Dogs.
Did you hear that, Michael?
If Mr. Hill is listening, he just gave a fist pump, I'm sure.
We remembered you.
So, very thankful to Chief Sullivan for tackling these initiatives. He's been very proactive coming to me with solutions on these problems that we have. And he's been a team player and more than willing to take these under his wing, and I really appreciate that. The street budget has once again been increased. Last year, we increased it by $12,500. This year, we're increasing it by $30,000. That's a pretty significant increase. I know we have lots of streets to make up. I think we've done 11, 12, or 13 over the past couple of years, and that's a pretty good start to where we want to go. But we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us. Outside of the STEP program for the Howe PD, all employees hired before July 1st, 2025 will receive the standard 3% raise as we have completed the overhaul of the pay structures from several years ago and the, the 8.0 inflation rate of 2022. We've adjusted the salaries. As you remember, we, we did pay studies and got everybody up to equal pay with our surrounding communities. So now, going forward, I don't anticipate...